Okay, let me. Crap, I can't see it. Okay, that's all right. The got brought up at the three cities meeting was.
That is.
Contract with Gresham.
Yeah.
And.
Meeting for the Fairview City Council for March twentieth. Does the clerk please call the roll?
Counsel Prom.
Here.
Counsel Kreameyer.
Here.
Counsel Owen.
Here.
Counsel Barton Mullins.
Here.
Counsel Quimby.
Here.
Counsel Arnold.
Here.
Mayor Weatherby.
Here.
Would you rise or I lead you in the pledge of allegiance?
Yes. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Well, welcome our audience. Uh, the first thing is the consent agenda. Do I hear a motion?
Move to approve the consent.
Second.
Who's in second? Discussion. Those in favor, sign five by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Passed unanimously. Uh, next, are there any citizens wishing to speak on non-agenda items? Yes, sir. Oh, no wait, Shirley, you're not a, you have an agen, you have an agenda item. Did you want to talk before that?
No, we had to raise my hand.
Oh, I thought you did, I'm sorry. Okay. Next is city administrator and directors' reports.
Lisa, I forgot to ask you, did you have anything?
I do not.
Are you sure? You don't want to, oh kidding.
I am obviously not Samantha and I do not have anything on behalf of the city administrator. Um, from the police department, I'm just very pleased to announce tonight that we've just hit in our last, um, check of the, of the prescript drug, prescription drug box, one thousand pounds. An amazing threshold. Um, I'm very proud of the fact that the city of Fairview was a leader in East County. We were the first to implement the prescription turn back box and others are following now. And yet we still, it's amazing to me that it can be up sometimes twenty pounds in a week. So, one thousand pounds is, is an amazing threshold.
Lisa.
How long has that been?
June of eleven, I believe. Wasn't it the middle of June of eleven when we did the ribbon cutting ceremony?
Great, great. Good to have that stuff, not out in the streets or being flushed into the system.
Exactly.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, one other item, just for the television audience and those here, that there are two openings for PSAC. I don't recall when the deadline is, but Public Safety Advisory Committee to the council has two at-large positions open, uh, and the deadline is quickly approaching. And if there are those interested, March twenty-ninth at five o'clock, we'd love to get a couple more applications in, uh, for those that would be interested in helping advise me and the council on public safety matters. Thank you.
Okay. And does Allen have a report?
No.
No? Okay, all right, well, this moving right along. Mayor and committee reports.
I'm sorry, I'm good.
Oh, I'm sorry, yeah.
I'll get it under, uh.
Okay.
It's okay.
All right, uh, let's start with Counsel Arnold.
Have nothing.
Uh, okay, Counsel Quimby.
That was quick, Ken.
Yes.
I didn't want to pull this off of the consent agenda to discuss it, but, uh, Allen, I do have a couple of questions about the contract with, uh, the access road for our well. If you could just answer a couple for me, um, with, um, it's on semiconductor and we've got a new access road going in to get to our well. Um, and I read over this and I see the word access road, they're going to build us an access road, installation of access road and so forth and so on, and a map showing access road. There's no definition of the surface material for driving on and there's no maintenance responsibility. And I just thought maybe that was something that you're comfortable with it and it's, it's unwritten, but there doesn't, I mean, I was concerned that they're just going to say, well, go ahead and drive on the grass and as soon as it turns to dirt, you'll have a dirt road.
No, it, just to give you a background, this is a reservoir.
Yeah.
Is off Gleason and there is no actual access to that reservoir right now. So, on semiconductor, what they're going to do is they're going to build, um, a gravel access and this was the easy way for us to get that. They've also said if they change it, they'll, if, if they have to move that access for us, they'll, they'll move that to, but it is, it's a gravel road.
Gravel road, okay.
Yes.
And they're going to maintain it as well?
Yes.
Okay. That's a.
Yeah, the only, the only thing they said is if we were to start taking giant trucks or something down there, then, you know, they'd want to talk to us about that, but no, we're, we're fine. It's a, it's a very good deal.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It was a good price.
I'm sure you saw that.
Yeah.
Thanks.
Okay, anything else?
That is it.
Uh, Counsel Barton Mullins.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Um, I went to a few meetings in the last week or so, uh, at Emictuck. We, uh, talked about this step, um, grant that is out there and is at the hundred and fifty percent list and now we're going down to, uh, a hundred percent list. The two-hundred-and-thirty-eighth and Halsey, um, Halsey to Gleason, it has made the list as has Sandy Boulevard, um, and the freight and multimodal improvement there. Uh, the M-Tip, which is the other half of the step application process, Sandy Boulevard is also on that, um, which is great. And then we, uh, just last week put in, uh, in Gresham, Hogan, two-hundred-and-forty-second Powell. If anybody has any questions about these, I'll be glad to sit down and, and talk with you about them. We also talked about the RTO, uh, funds and that is the, uh, grant that's out there for, um, the Gresham Area Chamber of Commerce and, uh, West, oh gosh, West Chamber Commerce Consortium? Is that pretty close?
Yes, consortium.
Okay. Consortium, okay, thank you. Uh, anyway, we are down to, uh, getting very close to picking which one of those, uh, applications gets the grant. We are, uh, to individually go back through and rate each one of those applications ourselves and then come back to the group. So, that, uh, that'll be interesting. Again, if anybody has questions, please ask me. J-PAC, we talked again about the step and the hundred and fifty percent list going down to a hundred. They're going to be actually looking, going out to each site of, uh, the applications and looking at those, uh, in July and then it goes to ODOT by October to bring it down to a hundred percent list. Um, at J-PAC, we also talked about the Washington DC trip. Every year they have a trip back to Washington DC to talk to the legislatures back there. Um, basically the information that they came back with was, uh, that there's just really not that much more money in transportation funds coming out. We need to be, um, careful of those because, uh, that is dwindling away. At EMI, we talked about the bills going to the legislature and, um, which ones that they were going to support and I can get a list if anybody needs that. And at the EMI luncheon, we had a gentleman there from Organically Grown Company. They were in Eugene since nineteen sixty-eight and now they are in Gresham and hope to be bringing in another hundred and twenty employees, uh, by, I believe by June. So, hopefully they will be driving through our town as well. That's it.
Thank you very much. Okay, Counsel Owen.
Uh, nothing.
And Counsel Kreameyer.
I have a few things, uh, tonight, Mayor. First thing is, um, I've been working with Samantha Nelson, as everyone knows, regarding the micro loan program. Uh, we met last Wednesday, we discussed some, some issues that we had. A few other things came up, so we're just waiting back from, uh, our city attorney's office on getting additional clarification on a few items on that issue, uh, before we proceed and, and have our next, uh, micro loan, uh, program meeting, uh, committee meeting. Uh, next thing is EDAC met last week, they re-elected Dean Hurtford, uh, from Bumpers as the chairman of the committee and Renee Delano, uh, was elected as the vice chairman of that committee for this year. So, looking forward. Uh, we also had Jeff Anderson, our, our newest, uh, member and, um, uh, he was, he was there present as well as, uh, George Linglebuck. So, I think they'll be great additions to the committee as well. Um, a couple of things that I, I have questioned for, um, I guess maybe I can pose this one to Lisa since Samantha's not here. And that is if we could get an, um, an email sent out to, uh, the city council that shows or states what the exact, uh, revenue is for the red light camera that, so far to date, the actual, you know, net proceeds after Red Flex and all of our expenses are paid. Um, I've heard, I think, four different figures, so I'd kind of like to just know what the actual true figure is, uh, since we're going to be going into budget here pretty quick. Um, and then my last thing that I have is something for, uh, our city attorney for Heather. Um, I have a question for you regarding confidentiality agreements and how that pertains to city staff entering into confidentiality agreements with, uh, potential land developers and being able to keep those confidentiality agreements, um, basically secret or non-disclosing any of that information to people on city council. Um, I would like to know what your take on that is.
Um, I guess first of all, I'd have to see the, the actual agreement and it would also depend on exactly what the, uh, the deal was. For example, um, it's certain, if it's a real estate related transaction, um, there are definitely, you know, public records laws that apply to that. But in terms of the city staff to the city council and information, you know, flowing that way, not necessarily in a, a public setting, but, you know, in terms of you asking a city staff member about something, I mean, typically that's not, uh, typically that's not problematic. Um, but again, you have to look at the, what the confidentiality agreement says because, you know, I would want to make sure that you're not going to incur some sort of penalty for doing that. But all that said, if someone made a public records request for the agreement, uh, it's likely that agreement would be seen as a public record and disclosable. But again, I would have to look at it in the parameters of the agreement to make that ultimate distinction because as they, hopefully you're all aware, there are lots of different exemptions from what is and is not considered, you know, was not considered a public record. It's subject to disclosure, but that generally means to the public. So, I, I can't, you know, without having more like specific information, I, I can't really give you a, a definitive answer on that. Um, do you have a?
Well, I, I can give you this, the, the speci, the specificity I'm talking about. Um, I, I met with, with Samantha, with Samantha la, last week and I also met with, with Allen and Erica and I asked them, you know, what was going on down here at the corner of Village and, and, and Halsey because there was a grader that came in or a developer came in and graded the property. And I had people asking me, the citizens of Fairview, what was going on and I said no idea. I had no idea what was going on because we were never informed of, of any type of, you know, permitting or, or economic development that, that was going to take place down here on the corner. So, I asked Samantha and Allen both last Wednesday, what's going on and they, and both of them told me that they could not disclose any of that information to me because that it was an agreement that they had with a developer and they, the developer didn't want any of the information to get out, uh, in order to potentially, you know, uh, have somebody else come in and, and, you know, mess up their deal that they had. And I, I just found that problematic that, that city staff could enter into an agreement or an arrangement like that and, and, and put us as a council or us as a city, uh, in a liability position when we're not privy to that information. That's, that, I guess that's my question.
And I haven't seen the agreement, so I'm not really, I'm not familiar with the parameters of the situation, but, um, I think it's definitely something that, you know, we can address probably, I can't address it here right now at the meeting because I don't have the.
Sure.
Agreement, but I definitely think it's something that we can, we can work on.
Okay, thank you.
Come to a conclusion that works for everyone.
Okay, anything else?
Uh, no, that's it, thank you.
Okay, uh, Counsel Prom.
Okay, let me follow up with that then. So, Allen Berry, so do you have a confidentiality agreement with the developer?
No. Do you want me to come on there next time?
Yeah, please.
While we're doing that, Counsel Owen, do you want to go ahead?
No, I don't, no, go ahead.
Oh, okay, gotcha.
Just to give you the scoop on this and, and basically if you, if you actually read the sign that's on the corner, the name of the person is on the sign with his phone number, uh, as it, as it turns out. Uh, but it, it's a little bit, Mayor Weatherby was involved. The, the person who's, the developer's name is on the sign. The developer requested that we not disclose who he's trying to, um, work this, uh, project for. And he, it's no, it's not written down, he just asked us, uh, I, he, he, he brought the mayor, the mayor met with them, he wanted the mayor to meet with that group where he said, please do not make it public because he didn't want to jeopardize the, uh, winning the project. Um, if we want to, I would, I would be uncomfortable, um, disclosing that information, but if you want me to, it, uh, the Mayor, the Mayor Weatherby knows who it is.
I think it would probably be in the, the council of best interest just to discuss the, the issue individually with staff, um, rather than do it in the open session. And, uh, I think that would be the best way to proceed here and I think that that would be in the best interest of the city, um, in terms of how to, you know, proceed with this situation.
It, it's quite common with a lot of these, uh, people that come into the city. We see this a lot, people approaches about lots in, in towns and farms, different places. And they do say to us, please, we're, we're, we're looking at this now, but we, we do not want to make this, um, uh, common knowledge until, uh, we're, we're further along in the process and that's, it's common. And I think if you talk to a lot of the other economic development professionals in the area, you'd find that that's, it's, it's a relationship that is, it can be tenuous when you've got people competing for different pieces of property. And I, I like say, I'm not, um, I, I wouldn't, I wouldn't like to put anything at risk, but, um, I would defer to Samantha or the mayor on that.
Okay, thanks.
I just want to see it built quite frankly.
So do I.
Yeah.
I just like more information. I mean, you know, maybe I could be helpful in, in getting it going forward.
Yeah, we.
Anyway, let's, we'll talk in.
Yeah.
Okay. Outside of this.
Okay, yeah, thank you. Anything else?
I have nothing else.
Okay. Um, and I have nothing. And Counsel Owen.
Yeah, I guess just a follow-up on that. I mean, I think it would be a good idea for us, you know, collectively to meet, uh, and with the city attorney just to talk about, you know, economic development and, uh, you know, properties that may, uh, be developed now or in the future. I mean, I think it would be nice, uh, from a, just a heads up that, you know, as things happen or we know that a piece of property in the city, because we're not a very big city, there's not a lot of building activity going on, that at minimum, if we could just get a heads up that says, hey, you know, there's going to be some grading on a piece of property located at a particular place, uh, because I think part of it is, is that we are in a situation where, you know, neighbors and other businesses come to us and say, hey, what's going on? And a lot of times, you know, we're the last ones to know. The only thing that I think's worth a discussion just kind of going forward is, and I'm not a developer, but I would imagine that if you were a developer and that you were in a situation to be accepting a certain amount of risk and, uh, as far as trying to entice somebody to build in the city, which is what we all want, that, I mean, I can understand that maybe they would be a little reluctant as far as sharing that information. Not that anybody appears not trustworthy, but I guess I just don't want to pit it, you know, staff between council. I, I don't believe that staff is doing anything to try to keep anything from us. I mean, they're just respecting the, uh, you know, the, the will of the developer at this point. So, at some point, if we could just get together and kind of just establish a baseline, so as things happen, we know what's going on and we may not know all of the level of detail. I'm not sure that we need to know it in the infancy stages, but I think everybody up here, uh, would be more comfortable.
I think I'll say something since my name was mentioned. Uh, it is not unusual that a developer or a real estate person would invite me to come along, for instance, about a year ago or so, uh, a, a real estate person named Childs invited me to go down to, uh, as with, I think, I don't know if they were city staff or not, but anyway, with him, down to a building down at the Townsend property. And they had a group of people from Procter and Gamble come in, they flew in, were there about fifteen minutes and flew out. They had a big display set up with every product that Procter and Gamble made and I just stood there and kind of looked pretty. Well, I mean, my mother said I dr, I, I looked good cleaned up. So, anyway, um, shook hands and said, hi, um, you know, welcome to Fairview and that's about not much else. And they went away and they never bought. Nothing ever happened. So, it does happen and I know that there are situations, uh, I never ask questions. I, I, I respect the idea that, uh, I don't know, I'm not a developer, I don't know what goes on, but I do know that there are deal, business deals, uh, and I've never worked again in the private sector, that you don't want to get out because there are people who, um, are against, um, I know one situation, uh, certain, uh, building in the city and, uh, I wouldn't want a deal that is potential, um, hurt because a person was able to, to basically screw it up. Um, I think it's important to give every advantage we can to economic development within the city and I, I think it's, it's really where it goes beyond just saying nice things about it, actually doing something to help promote it. So, I guess I will do what I can, um, and that's kind of where I, that's kind of where that is. Okay, with that, uh, next is count, is, uh, presentation, Shirley Craddock. Shirley, welcome.
Well, thank you very much for this opportunity. I really appreciate your willingness to allow me to come on a, um, every once in a while to, um, talk about some of the activities and, um, opportunities for your city and activities that are being discussed in the region. Uh, my job is to do my best to keep you informed and, um, and to be aware of the discussions that are occurring at the regional level. Uh, so what I'd like to do today, I want to, I'd like to go about this a little bit differently than I normally do. As you probably know, Metro is in a collective agency, it has a multiple responsibilities. Um, it was, um, formed in the nineteen seventies by the state legislature and at that time, um, it was given the responsibility, initial responsibility of managing the growth boundary. And since then, uh, Metro has, um, acquired other responsibilities. We now own and operate fourteen cemeteries, Pioneer Cemeteries. As you know, we own, um, multiple parks, well, uh, two, uh, one of them is a large one that's in your city, Blue Lake Park and, and Two Boat Landings. And we also, of course, are responsible for the Oregon Convention Center, the Expo Center, the Oregon Zoo and the Center for Performing Arts in downtown Portland. So, I'm not going to, what I'm not going to do is focus on those venues that Metro has responsibility for. I really like tonight to talk about more about economic opportunity or economic discussions that are, development discussions that are occurring region-wide and make sure your city's aware of these because there's some opportunities for your city that I want to make sure that maybe you can take advantage of as a, as we move forward. First, just to kind of bring you up to date, um, the metro, this is the metro region, there are six districts, uh, six of us run by district and Council President Hughes runs region-wide. Uh, the region is about over almost one-point-six million people. Uh, each of the metro districts are about two-hundred-and-fifty-eight thousand people. And according to, by our, our charter and state law, we have to re-look at our districts every census period to rebalance, to make sure they're balanced by population. And so in two thousand and ten, um, after the census, we had to re-look and our districts have been, we've been redistrict, we've been, our boundaries have moved. And what, it probably doesn't surprise you is that the metro population, the, the population in the metro region has shifted and it shifted more to the edges. So, more people have, uh, moved to the east part of the region and the, and the west part of the region have grown more than the south part of the region. And what this did is, uh, and, um, we needed to redistrict and, uh, change our boundaries. So, I formerly was also representing the city of Happy Valley, I no longer do that. Counsel Carlotta Colette now represents Happy Valley. My district has moved, has shifted east. I, uh, my district used to go to I-205 and now I have, it has moved to one-twenty-second. And what's interesting is District Six, that is the smallest district or by geography, has actually even gotten smaller by geography because that's where the core of the population, the dense, the most dense areas of the Portland, of our population, our metro region is. So, I think it's an interesting, just an interesting observation. I, it doesn't, probably not surprising information, but it's, I, I find it, um, you know, it really does point out how these, our population shifts have occurred. We've all felt in the east part of the region on the, on the growth that we've had. Uh, we have three new metro counselors, um, Sam Chase, who, who took Rexburg-Holmes' position, um, uh, former Mayor Craig Dirksen of Tigard, is now, uh, represents the southwest part of the region, took Counsel Carlotta, or Carl Hosticke's position, and then Bob Stacy took, uh, former Governor Roberts' position in District Six. When I took office, um, I have, um, three goals that I'm always focusing on that I think are, that are really, are important to me. If I can, when I leave office and I can, I can look back and say that I might have helped contribute to accomplish some of this, I will really be very satisfying. And one of those is, is one thing that, that motivated me to get engaged in politics, I didn't get engaged until after I retired, is I want the east part of the region to be more prosperous. I want to re, help rebalance the metro region where we have, um, the, where the east side of the region can be as prosperous and have as much economic development as we're seeing on the west side of the region. So, my, my job, as I see, is always what can the role, what role can Metro play as a regional government to help bring more jobs to the east part of the region? The other, and, and I'll, I'll get into this in a minute, is one of the roles that Metro can play is helping make sure there's an adequate land supply for those jobs to be, to be able to, uh, attract businesses to the east part of the region. The other goal I have is, is, is make sure that we can follow through with the, um, projects that we've identified in the East Metro Connection Plan and get some of those projects built, bring those, that funding to the east part of the region. And the other one is to rebalance our housing affordability. We have, uh, in the east part of the region, we have more housing than we do jobs. In the west part of the region, they have more jobs and they do housing. Most of the people that live in the east part of the region travel more than ten miles a day to get to their job. And one of the, one of the, um, best things we can do to help people to make, uh, living more affordable is to live closer to your job. And also to have jobs that you can, um, raise a family on. And so, uh, this is one of my goals. And so what I want to focus on next is some of the effort that Metro is making to help make some of this happen. One of this is, is there, and you, I probably heard this, because this has been going on for over, um, over eighteen months, is the, the region worked together, uh, to, with a variety of groups and, um, included the Port of Portland, the Portland Business Alliance, uh, the Business Oregon and NAOP, which is the Commercial Real Estate, um, Association. They worked together on, um, completing an inventory of our large, uh, industrial sites in the region and focused on, on sites that were twenty-five acres or more. And I, and we found in this study that nine of the fifty-six sites could be developed within six months or less, but all the rest had significant challenges. Uh, there was a lot that had to occur before those, uh, large lots would be available for industry. And the challenges are, is how do we get transportation investment? do we get transportation investments made to access those sites? A lot of the sites have brownfield contamination. How do we amend that? A site assembly, many of these large lots are available, but they were owned by multiple landowners. So, how do we help aggregate those, that land together to be available for industry? And then, a lot of the sites are not annexed yet into a city, and so, how, and there's so many challenges nowadays to be able to annex land into cities. And then, wetland mitigation. Many of the sites had wetlands, and by law, we can't mitigate wetland until we have a business identified, which is quite a barrier to be able to make land available for industry. So, the effort here that's occurring is that we've identified these sites, where now we're in the, in the beginnings process, it's gonna, this will go on for a while, of how do we look for funding to be, make, to overcome some of these barriers? And those barriers, of course, getting the transportation improvements made, amending the brownfields, doing the site assembly, et cetera.
I'm just curious, Shirley, out of the nine, nine of the 56 sites that could be development-ready in six months or less, how many of them are out here in East County?
We have, well, one of them is the Gresham Vista site, which is a significant one, and the other one is the Trip, some of the properties down at the, in Troutdale, the Trip property. But not all of that, not all the properties in Troutdale are available yet. They have some brownfield contamination, and they have wetland mitigation that needs to occur. But one of the best sites is the Gresham Vista. Actually, we're quite fortunate, because most of the other sites are on the west side of the region, so we're really happy to have these available to us in the west side, or in the east side.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, so, so every, excuse me, go back to this. So, now, so some of the legislation that Metro is working on, working with our state legislature during this legislative session, is to look, is to get support from the, from the state on helping make funding available to do some of the, take some of these actions. And one of those is looking at a loan, a non-refundable loan, which I never understand that phrase. It seems kind of like an oxymoron, when you say a non-refundable loan. But we are asking for the state legislature to put money aside for cities to have access to that land, that, that funding, to help mitigate some of the industrial, the challenges they have on their industrial sites. The other one is brownfield redevelopment. There is, there are 2,300 brownfield properties identified in the Metro region. Sixty-three hundred acres of that, or seven percent of it is commercial, or, excuse me, sixty-three hundred acres, or seven, seven percent of all commercial mixed-use or industrial zone land in the region. So, it's a fairly, fairly significant amount of land that is not available to us because it has contamination. So, a goal is, how do we bring that land back and make it available to us to put back into the land supply? And again, we're working with the state legislature to be able to help us with funding on that, to see, to make funds available to restore these lands back into our, our land supply. Another project that is being worked on in the region, I, you may have heard of the community investment initiatives that Metro began over eighteen months ago. Metro has approached a group of business leaders in the region and asked them to work together. And we've given them latitude. Metro is not engaged in this, and Metro Council is not very engaged in this. It really is, really wants us to be seen that this is truly from the private side of life and not the public side. And this helps us become creative. What is it we can do in our region to be more creative and be able to enhance our economic development? And one tool that's coming out of this, there's multiple tools that they're working on, but one tool that they're beginning to look at is a tool called Development Ready Communities. And it's a, it's a tool that is to work with cities that have an interest in participating in this, on helping, assisting them in maximizing their development opportunities. A lot of the challenge that many cities have in the region is they're, they're small. They don't have the staff available to be able to do some of the work that it takes to be ready for development. And is it, so, is it, they're putting a tool together to see that, that might be an assessment tool, to help you analyze, what is it that some of, some of your weaknesses in your city, or some of the things that you could do differently that would help you be able to be more ready for development? Oregon City is going to be the pilot city that is agreed to do this, and so, we're in the very beginning stages, stages of developing this tool. So, as we move forward with this, I'll be bringing this back to you as we learn more about how this works. Other funding that's available to you in the city, this is money that has come from the natural areas bond measure that was passed in 2006. It's a capital grants program. This is a program where you can, neighborhood groups and community groups and nonprofits can work together to be able to bring on land, bring, restore land that you might not be able to do otherwise. So, if you have any neighborhood groups where you have a stream running through their, through the neighborhood, where they have an interest to do something different about, with that stream, update culverts, something, this funding is available for your city. And I just want to make sure you're aware of that if you have any interest in looking into this. As you know, we completed the East Metro Connections Plan this last year with an eighteen-month study that you nicely, I appreciate, thank you, agreed and participated in, and passed a resolution to support. We are now moving forward to begin, looking for funding to begin some of the projects. So, there's several that we can, I can talk about tonight. Councilor Barton Mullins mentioned a couple of them. Out of that East Metro Connections Plan, it, the priority project was 238th, the Hill and Wood Village. And so, by working together, East Monmouth County Transportation Committee, which is the coordinating committee that represents the four cities at Metro, is working together to look at the two funding, flexible funding sources that we have available to us. One is M-Tip, which is the Metropolitan Transportation Improvement Plan. These are the flexible funding transportation dollars that Metro receives from the federal government that we can use at, that are discretionary dollars. And the other one is STIP, is the State Transportation Improvement Plan. These are the flexible funds that ODOT has available to them. And so, we've been working together on how can we help those two sorts, sets of funding complement each other to be able to get something done. So, two things that are happening is, we're applying to ODOT for helping us work with the design phase of the 238th, to get that design. And then, we're looking at the M-Tip dollars to make, make available construction dollars to be able to actually do the project. So, this is moving forward. Then, there is also, we're beginning the effort to look at the, putting in the signal, connecting the signals together, the TISML project, where the signals talk with each other. And it'll, it'll continue from 238th through 242nd. ODOT is in the beginning phases of looking at how that might happen. That's where they put fiber optic in the road to be able to have the signals talk with each other, so they are in sync. And this can really help improve mobility through that corridor. The other thing that's moving forward is the Powell-Division Transit Analysis. This is a, one of the projects, lead projects that came out of the East Metro Connection Plan. And this is looking at what are the transit options that will connect Portland State University with OHSU on the waterfront, coming across the Willannah River, coming out Powell to 82nd, connecting to PCC at Division, and then coming out Division to Mount Hood Community College. And we're now even beginning to look at, how can we connect that up with the Southwest corridor study that's occurring, where we have connectivity all the way out through the southwest part of the region. So, this, this is beginning in the beginning stages, and we'll be coming back to you when we get into more detail about this, to, to make sure you're aware of this and be engaged in the discussions. So, back to the regional flexible funds. These are the M-Tip dollars, some of the funds that are, that are being made available to this part of the region. Blue Lake Park, there's the Forty Mile Loop, the Sundial Road, there's a trail project being developed there. The Rata Road improvements, I know Monmouth County just approved these, so that, the improvements on Rata Road and Wood Village will be occurring in the near future. And then, the Sandy Boulevard projects from 230, 238th, those are fundings available that will be able to, to improve Sandy Boulevard. What's really nice again about Muktuk, and again, I appreciate Councilor Mullins being, participating in this, is that we really have worked together, the four cities have really worked together, along with Monmouth County, to really look at, how can we get the most bang for the buck with the dollars that we have available? So, the M-Tip dollars are going to help improve Sandy from Gresham all the way east through into Fairview. We'll really be able to do some significant changes to that, to the boulevard. Now, again, these are, M-Tip dollars are dollars that are out for three, out three years. So, these are not dollars that are immediately available. These, this process is always several years out.
Shirley, would that include dollars to improve Sandy from 223rd to 230th? Because I believe that was part of-
I believe so, yes. I believe so. I think it's going to really create, complete-
All the way?
Yeah. I will, I will, I'll look in there, make sure that I have that correct. Okay, so, I feel free to interrupt me if you have other questions. What I'd like to go to now, though, so these are projects that are, go back to these. These are economic and development projects, or funds that are available to us, that are, can really help benefit our, our economy in the, in the region. And so, now, I'd like to shift to the Climate Smart Communities discussion.
Shirley, I have a couple of questions, too. You were talking about some of the grant funds for purchasing property. Maybe just a little bit more information, can I give you two examples, and maybe you could tell me if this might qualify for that? But what about a permanent farmer's market, or perhaps even a community garden area? Would that be something that might qualify?
Are you talking about the nature neighborhood dollars?
Yes.
Yeah, the, the nature neighborhood dollars are from the Metro, the bond measure that was passed in 2006. This was overwhelmingly improved by the voters in the region. And it was to do, restore our, to, to help, brings, has asked capital funds available to purchase land, to put in the public domain, to improve our water quality, our fish habitat, and our wildlife habitat. So, the dollars that have been set aside or helped purchase that land, now, there's two other focuses of that bond measure. The other one is to make capital grants available to communities for restoration efforts. So, it's, it's help with habitat and not so much for community projects, like you mentioned.
Okay. And then, is it possible that Metro can help in, with the road that is between, it's up here off of Gleason, with the improvement, it, what is the name of that? Excuse me, it's Gleason to, 223rd to about 202nd by Salish Ponds? That whole section there?
Yeah, that is one of the projects in the East Metro Connection Plan. It, it's not in the first tier, but it's definitely a project that is in that, in that program. The total projects are, I think, were over a hundred projects total. They've been clustered together, and that's what's the value of doing this corridor study, is that we are, we're able to cluster. And that's what we're be able, able to accomplish with this recent fund, the M-Tip and STIP dollars, is that we're looking at, how do we cluster these projects together and not, so we're, so that, that is one of those projects that is available, will be funded eventually. It's not in the first tier. So, it's on the list.
I was just curious how those are prioritized, do you know?
The, the group prioritized them in that study. There was a, they went through, it took some of the time, is figure out what were, what were the projects that were most important. So, it's, I, what I will do is, I didn't bring the handout with me, so I will look at where that is on the, on the list for you. Because I know, Mayor Wetherby, that's been very important to you, too.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, so, another project we are working on as a region. Now, the responsibilities that we have at Metro as the agency come from a variety of directions. One of them is our statute, where that was put into law, that these are your responsibilities. And that is, one example of that is we manage the urban growth boundary. The other one, we also get, we also get, some of our projects come from things that we want to do as a, as a region. We work together and say, these are important projects that we want to focus on. But a third way we, we get, projects that we focus on this region come from our state legislature. This project is mandated by the state legislature. It was passed in 2009. And so, Metro was given the responsibility to take the lead on it, but we are all part of this discussion and part of this effort. And so, I would like to talk a little bit about this tonight, and then ask some questions of you about how, what direction you, how you want to begin to have some of these discussions in more detail. So, in 2009, the state requires, is requiring us to reduce our carbon emissions. These are emissions from our tailpipes. These are greenhouse, carbon, greenhouse gas emissions from cars and small trucks. And the goal is, we have to figure out how we're going to reduce our carbon emissions by 2035, by 20%. So, the Metro has staff, along with the cities, have been working on this, on figuring out, what are some scenarios that we need to put together that will get us to meet that goal? And so, it's, we're focusing on, what are the investments we need to make that are in transit, in walkable communities, and access to jobs that will help us get there? Now, there's a variety of ways we can achieve this. And we actually are going to, are, we, as they look into this in more detail, we're within about 10% of this goal already by the plans that we have for the region.
Shirley, can I ask? Okay, if you look at this, as I understand it, there's like a pie. You want to reduce it by 20%. Part of the pie, as I understand it, is that the state is responsible for larger vehicles, buses, 18-wheelers, et cetera, et cetera. And so, what I'm wondering is, is what part of that 20% is that responsibility? In other words, cars don't make up 100%. It's just a major portion or part of that total, correction?
The, the, the work was to reduce the carbon emissions from cars and trucks by 20%. So, the, the effort that this ODOT is responsible for is not part of this 20%. That's the other effort that they're focusing on.
So, it's more than 20% total?
Yes. Well, yeah, this is just reducing carbon emissions from cars by 20%.
Well, one of the things I would suggest is, in terms of transportation, looking north of Gresham is Trimate. I've been trying for years to get Trimate to make a study to take a look at transportation north of Sandy. And I know that we've received this issue from, or heard about from NACO and other employers, and they, they don't really give us more than just lip service. They say we made a study and there's no problem, except they don't talk to anybody. They're in a program, which I think is very patronizing. And the other thing is, is the Banfield Flyer, which really assists areas north of Gresham, and it would not in all hamper, it would actually, Max would actually fit in with it very nicely. And it was a success. So, I don't think that, I think if you really want to move people and you really want to cut down pollution, then you got to move people with mass transit, and then you have to get serious about it.
You're exactly right. Transit could play a big role in this. The transit, the, I'm not sure if you're aware, but the Metro region, we as a group of cities, group of jurisdictions, we have, the federal government gives us funding for our transportation projects, but we have some, we have to, some accountabilities back to them. And one of them is, is that we have to keep our air toxic levels at a certain level. Transit has played a huge role in this. This is why there's been so much effort with the light rail system through the last 25, 30 years, because the transit system can carry so many more people by, and with so, with much less impact on our, our air quality. So, we're beginning to bump up against those air quality standards and really need to put more emphasis on the transit. And Mayor, part, one of, out of the East Metro Connection Plan, part, one of those goals is increasing the transit projects, the transit availability in the east part of the region. And I know you've been an advocate for that for many years, is you getting, having transit more accessible to the residents of the city of Fairview. And I believe, I know there are lines that are, have, were identified, specific routes that we want the transit to take that came out of the East Metro Connection Plan. The challenge we're going to have with all of this, as you, probably doesn't surprise you, is the funding level to be able to make all this happen. And so, the, the next step in this is to really get, begin to talk about how we're going to accomplish this. And so, that's the discussion I would like to have with you now, is how would you like to go about this discussion? We need to get, we need to sit down with you and have a chance to have a more, put more time into this and be able to get your input. And I was wondering if you might consider allowing us to either meet with you as, in a work session, or then another option might be, is to maybe to bring the three cities together as a joint meeting and have a discussion in more detail about this. So, I, it's complex. I find it pretty challenging to describe succinctly, and it really would be helpful to get your input, because part of that is- be helpful to get your input, because part of that is, is what, is the, is the, how we're going to make sure we can achieve this, and we need your help in figuring, helping us figure that out. So I, I'm just, this is just a highlight of, just to make sure you're aware of this project, but also, the next step now is, how do we work, work with you and talk to you more?
I think if we have a three or four city meeting, this might be an ideal topic, and to get everybody together on it.
I, we would be glad to. Just to be able to ask you some questions, get your feedback, get your input, make sure you're truly feeling comfortable with this and what this is all about. Because once again, this has been mandated by the state legislature, and we have to accomplish that. So I, we, we're all in it together. Any other comments, or? Okay. Okay, another opportunity for you, I want to make sure you're aware of, is the Community Planning and Development Grants. These are grants that are available to each of the cities in the region to, for community and economic development. And we just, the deadline unfortunately has just passed. I'm not sure if your city was aware that these were available to you. I noticed that you did not apply the funding, for the funding. We received over 24 applications for these dollars. There's been, there'll be over $6 million worth of funds available to the region for this, and so these grants will become available again in the future. I'm not sure if you're familiar with where this funding is coming from. I remember that, as, back in the, I think it was around 2008 or so, as we were expanding the urban growth boundary, the cities were really struggling with trying to, as we brought land in, we, cities were having trouble getting the land prepared for development. For example, Gresham, we brought in, Springwater was brought into the Gresham area, the city of Damas, or the land that now is the city of Damascus was brought in. There were lands that were brought in on the east side of the, of the, excuse me, the west side of the region. And the cities were not able to get, to do the work it takes to get, get it ready for development. So the land was sitting in foul, even though it was within the urban growth boundary, no development was occurring. So the development community agreed to allow to have a 1 percent tax, excess tax be added to permits in the region. So each time a permit is pulled, there is a small tax added to that, and that money goes into this fund to be able to be distributed back to the cities to be able to do your community planning, to make these lands available to you. So this has evolved over time, and now these funds are available, and cities are applying for them. And I can just give you some examples of some applications that we've received. You running out of time?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. Gresham has applied for some effort on their, some in the Rockwood area, Troutdale is applying for their town center, urban renewal. So I just want to make sure that the next time these refunds can be, or come around, that you know about this, and then you have an opportunity to apply for them. Okay, I will quit there, I'm getting the high sign, thank you, counselor. Just, you know, basic facts, you probably already know all this, because we have a new baby elephant, a new veterinary center, Glendale Golf Course is on it, is heading in a new direction, we have a lot of applications there. And then, we've been working on the Get Streets Smart program, and we're working with small businesses. So I'm going to stop there, and I really appreciate your time and allowing me to be here tonight to, you know, bring you up to date on some of the discussions that are occurring at, in, at Metro and in the region. Any questions or comments at this point?
Councilor Mullins.
I just have a comment. Just thank you very much for bringing this to us. I know there's so much going on in the Metro region, and it's, and Metro does so many more things than most of us realize or know about, so I appreciate you, you bringing this to us and keeping us up to date.
Thank you very much.
Councilor Quimby.
A couple of things, Shirley. One, I was really pleased to see the amount of development and economic activity that you're kind of behind and pushing. It's, it's a very welcome change, in my opinion, from what I've seen from Metro over the last 10, 12 years. And then, one detail item, and I don't know that you could do anything about this, but when you showed this slide with the three programs in East County that are getting funding, and the Forty Mile Loop was getting 2.3 million, and, and then, seems to me that's bike traffic and pedestrian traffic getting a huge chunk of the pie. And down at the bottom, we have this, this strip of land between 223rd and 238 on Sandy Boulevard that's in terrible shape, especially between 230th and 223rd, and it wasn't even getting just barely over half of a million dollars. It seems to me that's a lot more important. I don't know who made those decisions, but it would be neat to see those two things reversed.
Feels out of balance.
We've got a lot of, yeah, we've got a lot of traffic, heavy car traffic, as well as pedestrians, especially in the summer with all the people that work at Townsend Farms, and it's very dangerous to not have sidewalks along Sandy there.
Well, I, I will check on the, I believe the M-Tip, and the combination M-Tip and STIP dollars are going to pretty much complete the Sandy project. Now, again, these dollars that we're talking about today are for 2015, so these are several years out, and, so you're not going to see construction tomorrow. But that's how the federal government works, is they, we go two to three years out when they allocate funding. So I, hopefully, we can say in the next five years that you're going to see Sandy Boulevard completely improve between the city, from the city of Portland to out to Troutdale.
Okay. Thank you. Councilor Prom.
Yeah, Shirley, do the Community Planning and Development Grants require matching funds?
Um.
From the city?
I, I don't know the answer to that, I need to ask. The, I know there, I don't know the answer, I'll have to get that information for you.
So then I would ask, maybe, or?
I don't think so. I don't think so. I, but let me, I'm, I'm not positive. There really, you, I needed, what I need to do is ask the staff to describe the process, because I don't know how the process works, and that's what I need to, I'll get back to you.
And my question for staff would be, then, wondering why we didn't apply for anything? Maybe that's something we could ask Samantha, so.
Okay. Anything else? Well, thank you, Shirley. And I'll second what Councilor Quimby said, I think sometimes it was the Forty Mile Loop that is the tail wagging the dog. Never quite understood that prioritize that over some of the other needs, but anyway, that's it?
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, did you?
No, I'm good, thank you.
Okay.
Hey, thanks for coming tonight, I mean, very informational, and you actually bring some credibility to Metro, so thank you for what you do for us.
Well, thank you very much, I appreciate that. So, I want to make sure, I, I have here that I'm going to check on the, on the CET grants, the matching funds, and what else did you ask me that I said I respond to? I didn't write it down as I, as I went.
The prioritization.
Yeah. The, the, what do you call, the freeway flyer, what do we call that?
Oh, yeah.
And, and a study on transportation north of Sandy.
Okay, north of Sandy, okay.
And you were going to, yes, you were going to give us an idea on that, Salish Ponds, Gleason?
Yes, the status of that, where, where that is in the process.
Good point.
Okay, great, thank you.
Good point. And thank you. I also second what, what you heard about your job you're doing, and Councilor Owen's right, doing, I thank you very much, great job.
Thank you, Mayor.
Mr. Mayor, we have an answer, I think, from Mr. Berry about the grant.
Yeah, the Nature in the Neighborhoods, of course, is, is our Salish Ponds project, that's, that's one that we have participated in. The next phase of that, and Metro have been working closely with us, we didn't apply this year because they basically told us we weren't really ready, because the next, the next series wants you to have a public-private partnership with an educational component. So this year, we want to put that together, but we want to make sure we do a, want to get a good partner and make a good presentation, and quite frankly, I'm sure we'll be talking about it at Parks, but that's likely to be something that we're focusing maybe on the East Pond or something like that, at Salish, because it does have to be a, a nature thing. In terms of the, the grant, in terms of the economic development, I can show you that, it didn't really apply to us, it was, they were for dollars that helped you with a planning process, but you couldn't apply them to existing processes, and it couldn't be something that you'd already got in the mix. And we couldn't, we looked at it and spent some time, but we couldn't, we even thought about, with that grant, you could actually put in with several partners, and someone had to be in the lead, but none of the little towns here, we didn't really, we didn't, we didn't feel that we had anything that would, would meet. Because we had, there's lots of things that we would have liked to have slotted into that, but we just couldn't quite get into the slot.
Okay, thanks, Alan.
I wanted to go back to Councilor Arnold. Now, I think what you were asking about is the, the road improvements along Gleason Street, and, which of course is by Salish Ponds, is that, is that correct? Okay, yes. Now, and, but I understand what you're responding to is another funding source, so, is the Nature in Neighborhoods funding, which is available. And I'll just put in a plug, those dollars are that levy, if you, that levy gets passed is going to help you be able to fix your, with your project, so they are all, everything's linked together. So I'm, I'm probably creating confusion here, because we're talking about two different funding sources for two different purposes.
Yeah, I, I went out to try and get my Climate Smart folder to show you afterwards, and that's where I was going. In, in terms of the roads, like Shirley said, the, the Arata Road project is actually going, I believe this for, the, our piece of the Sandy from 230th to 238, well, hours on Wood Village, is next spring, and then they, then the, the other projects are in the mix. They're just not to, the, the piece from 223rd to 230th is very complicated, and that's, they're trying to get that in design, but there's a, if you look on that north side, it really falls away really steeply. There are two creeks that go under there, so it's kind of, that's what, that's likely, I believe, to be the last piece of Sandy that we get done. I think there's a piece of Sandy that Gresham are going to, that's, that piece of Sandy that for the next STIP project, M-Tip STIP, is, is the piece in Gresham over near the Trimate plant, I believe. It's a, you know, we, we talk about this stuff ad nauseam, of course, at Muktaq, but, I mean, it's moving.
Okay. Thank you. Again.
I can see that, Councilor, you're perplexed, I'll be glad to talk with you later, but I'll, I'll get the information about the, where the road, the road status on, in the project list.
Yeah, Gleason is a two, it's two lanes each way, that was the major thing outside, but it's, it's, that's, it is several years away.
As I unplugged the wrong thing here, Susan.
It's okay, cartoons come next.
Hope you don't need your computer now, because I just took you offline.
Thank you, again, Shirley. And we'll get back, I'll get to your office, back to your office about the meeting. Okay, next is new business, and council discussion, anybody?
Council discussion.
Okay, council business and public hearings, the first is the PSU fire study. Chief, any comment?
Mr. Mayor, I believe this was a, an issue that was discussed informally amongst the council in the past, and there's been an interest now in readdressing it and rediscussing and potentially accepting PSU doing a study regarding fire services that may assist us as we look towards negotiating with Gresham for our fire contract the next couple of years.
So, would be in order to have a motion to take $10,000 from our contingency to fund the fire study? Do I hear a most-
Mr. Motion, I make, Mr. Mayor, make motions, take $10,000 from contingency and fund the PSU study in conjunction with Troutdale and Wood Village.
Second, second discussion. Those in favor, seeing the five, are saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It is passed. Next item is the duct study, and I want to continue that until April 3rd. The final measure is street closure, no parking, that is ordinance 3-2013. Chief?
Do you need that read by title only first, or?
Yep.
How should I start to read it?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. An ordinance of the Fairview City Council amending Chapter 10.05 and 10.25 of the Fairview Municipal Code concerning street closures and no parking regulations.
Okay, I have a staff member wants to make a presentation.
Mr. Mayor, very briefly, this is to formalize the street closure process and to clarify and marry the fact that a street closure in and of itself does not regulate the parking, and so there could be a conflict. And it also allows for proper signage and notice, which I believe is going to help us regulate the notice and the clarification for the folks, so that enforcement will not be an issue, because the proper notice and the proper signage would exist. And I believe ultimately that this will help us ensure the safety of the vendors, for example, at the farmer's market, visitors, and others that may request a street closure.
Okay, very good. Any questions? And I believe there's a side motion, Councilor Quimby.
If I can find it here. I want to amend the language in the title, and as necessary in the body of the ordinance to, when we vote on this, to declare an emergency, so that it can be implemented immediately after that second reading and, and vote on the ordinance, instead of a 30-day wait for implementation.
Okay, do I need to, to, I guess we can have-
He's moved, and then you need a second.
Second. Moving to second, any discussion? It's all new, all new form for the ordinances, folks. Okay.
Mayor Wetherbee, who's seconded?
I second.
Yeah.
And it wasn't all I vote?
We've not voted yet.
No, no. Okay, if there's no questions, then we will put this on the agenda for the next meeting, and have a public hearing at that time.
You have a motion on the floor to amend it.
Motion to amend it, oh, okay. Sorry about that.
Have a vote on that motion, and then you-
Okay, now, okay, no, do, there's a second, all those in favor of the amendment, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right. Okay, there we go. So, that will be, that will be for the agenda for the next meeting, we'll have a public hearing at that time. So, that takes-
Need to adjourn.
Second.
Need a second, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, we are adjourned. Nice. Counselor, I got a question.